And we'll move to the agenda for the regular city council meeting. We have additions to the agenda. Item number nine, approving the sending of a letter of support to the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission's application with U.S. EPA Brownfields Assessment Grant for $600,000 to be used to assess petroleum and hazardous substance brownfield sites within the seventh county northeastern Minnesota area. And secondly, item number 10, which is council information that the MINDOT will be having a freight plan open house scheduled in Duluth on January 16th. We also have one deletion, and that's the annual report from the Public Works Director, Gary Skolman. His report is not complete. They've had several water breaks through the holiday period, and he's behind in that, so we'll get that report hopefully shortly. Your pleasure with the agenda, additions and deletions.
Who moved with the additions and deletions of the agenda?
Motion by Councilor Dova to approve the agenda with the additions and deletions. Second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion on the agenda. Question.
Aye.
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 Yes, agenda with additions and deletions is approved. Thank you. We would go to the minutes of the December 17th regular city council meeting. Your approval of those minutes, please.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Kraus.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Dova. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Are there none? Question.
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Minutes from December 17th are approved. Thank you. Go to the payment of claims and approval of accounts payable. We have transfers, the City of International Falls to the Fund Number 101 from Fund Number 812, the Lodging Tax Fund, $240.75. We have accounts payable claims for the City of International Falls, $411,298.55. We have Airport Commission claims of $32,942.90. Airport Commission Terminal Project Phase Two claims of $504,332.43. And Runway Reconstruction Project Phase One claims of $24,935. Your pleasure with the resolution approving the transfers and the payment of claims.
Aye.
Motion by Councilor Deitch to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kraus. I'm going to ask the council to, on page two, to remove the item on the Cable Commission, KCTV peg fee, that that appropriation for $5,000, that that be voted on separately. Unless the council has concerns on that, I would just like to have that one voted on separately from the rest of the claims.
I would love to have that discussion.
Thank you. I do have one other question, and the city administrator, we haven't had time to look at it, and that's on page number six, under the professional services at the top of the page there, second item, the annual contribution to the Borderland Humane Society. I wasn't aware that we were doing an annual contribution. Are you aware that, Councilor Dova, in our budget, that we had $5,000 for the, in addition to the monthly payment of $2,025?
I didn't know, I didn't see it when we did our budget, but I do know that we have a $5,000 annual contribution that was discussed in Public Works in the last year.
Okay, all right. Further questions with regard to the transfers or the claims? The motion before us would be to adopt the resolution and not have the vote on the $5,000 for the KCTV. That would be taken separately. Further discussion. Are there none? Question.
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried. The resolution is adopted and approving the transfers and the payment of claims. Thank you. Then we have the KCTV appropriation of $5,000.
I would make the motion to pay the $5,000 for KCTV.
Second that. Okay, motion by Councilor Dova, second by Councilor Kraus to approve the payment of the $5,000 to KCTV.
Mayor?
Please.
I can start the discussion. So this was one of the issues that came up in last year's budget. We had $5,000 that was asked for from KCTV. We have not given the money in the past. When we were looking at appropriations for this year's budget, we looked at everything from the Chamber to Bacchus. I don't have my list right here with me, but there's a lot of things that are asked for from the city. And I think our city council, that our seated city council, that the term just ended a couple weeks ago, or a week ago, we went through a lot of painstaking conversation over the last couple weeks that was due for our budget. And this is one of the pieces that made it into the budget. There's things that I didn't like out of the budget, and there's things that I liked that happened in our budget. But this is just another piece of the budget that got voted on by the previous city council. And I understand that there is some difference of opinion on the necessary, how necessary KCTV is, and if the city should fund them. I coincidentally had a very quick conversation with Councilor Jackson before this city council meeting, and she told me that for the first time, we have some matching funds that are coming into KCTV. I believe it was $4,000 from the county and $1,000 for Rainier. That was one of the issues that we had in the past, is that nobody else is helping support KCTV, and they're getting to utilize the service. I know that we have a peg channel fee. We bring in roughly $14,000 for KCTV. We have a lot of folks in our community that don't have access to come to these meetings. They may or may not have access to read the information that the Journal provides via online and in newspaper content. And Channel 7, although the sound of this meeting is pretty poor on KCTV, people are able to watch and see the community events that we have, or the meetings that we're running here in this building, and not to mention the other areas of government that they're able to watch. It's $5,000 out of an $11 million budget. I have not supported KCTV in the past, but I have seen more and more how important it is to our community, and I don't see any reason why we don't give $5,000 for our own peg channel.
Mayor?
Councilor Deitch.
I have watched this, our council meetings on the TV, as we're talking about on the channel. I guess I have no problem giving the $5,000, but I would like to see something done with the volume in the presentation. Many, many times, the volume's cut out. I don't know what it takes to do that, who would be responsible for it, but the times I've watched it, not only with the city council, also with county and the water, it's poor. The acoustic, I don't know if it's just the buildings, or if it's something else, I would like to see something done with that if we are going to give them the money.
Please.
I was going to speak to the state council. I'm not responsible for, I discussed it with Robert, who handles voting. Basically, what we have there for our camera and what we have for our audio.
Not compatible.
It's not, you know, it's not the best. A few years ago, they looked at upgrading. What we provide them in terms, what we give them is what, you know, can't really improve our audio.
Well, I guess it's basically 50/50. I mean, if you can't hear half of what's going on, why watch it? That's my opinion on it.
Thank you.
And I guess the way it sounds, it's the city's responsibility to upgrade.
Now, city administrator, please.
I think to expand on Emma's comments, our system is a very old system, and you can see, I'm speaking now, Councilor Deitch's microphone is picking up my voice because this one's broken. And so we have an old system, and I think basically what Emma's saying is we have a very simplistic, basic system with a camera at the back of the room that's picking up the amplification from our speakers in here, not a direct connection into the actual audio system or the audiovisual system. And so, back in 2014, I think, or the beginning of 2015, solicit quotes to upgrade our system, upgrade a presentation system so we had what you see on your packets, each of the council members would have monitors, there'd be a monitor in the room or a TV screen essentially as big as 70 inches, so that what you're seeing in your packet, the public can see, could actually be communicated via the website and KCTV in this case. But the cost, it was over $35,000, it was between, there was estimates of $35,000 up to over $50,000. And the council at that time did not have money budgeted and was not willing to contribute money to upgrade the system. But we have received many complaints, and there's been many issues about council meetings being difficult to hear. I would add, though, that what KCCT publicizes or has on their station, including other meetings like the North Cooch District, so those are on there, some of their sound systems, or some of the volume on their systems are better because Darcy will go to those meetings with separate microphones that are closer to the table. We don't do that at the council meetings, and it's not as much of a problem that KCTV has our system here and picking up the audio from the room.
Right. Well, as I say, I think we should investigate looking into upgrading. Once again, to put it out there if you can't hear it, if the audience cannot hear it, it's not worthwhile. It's a waste of money to advertise or to support something if it does nothing.
Further discussion. I would like to weigh in and say, the last contribution that the City of International Falls made to KCTV was in 2013. We gave them $10,000. And so that money was given to them at that time to bolster the big channel and have that broadcast. I think it's one of those areas that's nice to have. Probably 50% of this community is not on cable but on satellite. They would not get any of what we're talking about here tonight. Also, I think that when we did the budget, we cut the cemetery by $5,000. We've been contributing $10,000 a year to the Cemetery Association. They came to us this year and said that they would be interested in having someone from the city council serve on the cemetery board. Yet we chose to not give them $10,000. In 2019, we cut them in half. And I think if we're going to reduce the $5,000 to the cemetery, I do not see how we can contribute $5,000 to a nice-to-have cable system. So I'm going to vote no.
May I?
Please.
I feel like this is a discussion that's already been had on an approved budget, so for us to go back and recant what the previous city council, we had these discussions, we had these deliberations, and we approved this budget, so for us to change it now, I think is a slippery slope. This was approved by the previous council. It made it through. It's an appropriation that was approved in the budget. I just have a hard time changing it now that we've seated a new council, but the action has already been taken, signed, sealed, and now to be delivered. And it's just my opinion on the matter.
Thank you, Councilor Kraus. I would only say to that, that, you know, a budget is a budget. It's a guiding instrument for the council. And I think every one of those, that's why it's before us this evening, still has to be approved by the city council. So while we have a budget, there may be times that we will change that budget or the amount of money that we're either contributing or paying out or being willing to purchase, that we may withhold purchases because of certain situations. So a budget is just an instrument to guide the council in their expenditures. Further discussion. Are there none? Question.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote no. There being three for the motion and two opposed, the motion carries and the $5,000 is approved. Thank you. Go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time?
I was, I'm just here to thank the council for supporting KCTV. We've been at this now for, since '13, so that's five years. We are moving forward. We have been very fortunate in hiring Darcy Sullivan as our taper. She's done a terrific job in the last year of 2018, besides providing 107 meetings, which include all the school district meetings, the Airport Commission, the County Board. The city council comes from the tape that the city provides. We have 107 meetings we provided. I'm just going to give you the list of other events. It's two-page, sporting events, public events, and the second page are cultural and musical events. If people cannot see this on their cable channel, they can go to the website and watch it. Just last week, when I was at a Christmas holiday gathering, I received a nice compliment, I get them all the time, from Etta Jean. She said that she was so happy that we had taped History on Tap at Louis Brew, because when I did the presentation, she was able to go to the website and watch that. She was out of town at the time of the presentation. So people watch it, they appreciate it, and as far as equipment goes, if we can get more money, we'll get better equipment. That is one of our goals, Councilor Deitch, is to, I'll be working on a fundraiser this year, looking for a matching grant so that we can get some really good equipment. We are dealing with high-grade consumer equipment right now, which is what the $10,000 was used for, was to buy our original equipment and then do some other, you know, we had to get other things as well as cameras, but. Oh, I just want to thank you. I think that your support is crucial. As Councilor Dova pointed out, it's leverage, it's all about leverage in this community. The airport leverages with the city contribution, leverage federal tax dollars. With the city and county contribution, we're able to leverage grant dollars as well for KCTV, and we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? If not, there'll be opportunity at the end of the meeting. Move to the consent agenda. We have license renewals for 2019, John's Ice and Fire Van Service, a taxi license, and Steve Boyham Construction, a snowplow license. We also have under the consent agenda approving the travel and continuing education training expenses for Kelly Myers to attend the ICC Upper Great Plains Region Three Educational Institute in February, the Energy Design Conference also in February, and the Quarterly Arrowhead Chapter Building Official Meetings. The next item is to approve the travel and training for Commissioner Ted Brokaw to attend various conferences and seminars. Those are listed in the packet. Approving the IRS mileage reimbursement rate for 2019. Approve the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Liability Coverage Waiver Form to not waive limits on municipal tort liability. Approve the travel and expenses for a city council to attend the League of Minnesota Cities Legislative Conference in St. Paul, except with appreciation the donation of a pallet, that's 40 cartons of white paper from the Packaging Corporation of America. And the last item under the consent agenda is revising the Resolution Number 5918, approving International Falls volunteer firefighters to join the voluntary statewide lump-sum voluntary firefighter reentirement plan with a benefit level of $3,600 per year versus the previous $3,300. Your pleasure with the consent agenda, which will have no discussion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Dova. And if any of the items that are on there, if you wanted to have them removed for a separate individual discussion and approval, they could be. But hearing now a motion by Councilor Dova and a second by Councilor Bowler to adopt the consent agenda. With that, question.
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you.
Finally, the new business.
Yes, new business. First, the mayoral proclamation on Catholic Schools Week for St. Thomas Aquinas School, January 27th through February the 2nd. Your pleasure with the mayoral proclamation and also the printing of that proclamation.
All moved.
Motion by Councilor Kraus.
Second.
Second by Councilor Deitch. Discussion on the motion or the proclamation? Are there none? Question.
Aye.
Aye.
I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Proclamation is approved. The second proclamation I did in December for Mr. Allen Anderson, who reached his 100th birthday on December the 19th, I presented the proclamation to Mr. Anderson. This is not one that would be printed, but did ask for your approval of that proclamation also.
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Deitch.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion on the motion or the proclamation? Question.
Aye.
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 Yes, motion is carried. A proclamation is approved. Thank you. Item number three is Mr. Ward Merrill, Citizens for Bacchus, please. And Robert, come on up.
Well, good evening, councilors, and thank you for putting us on the agenda. I've asked our board member, Bob Marquardt, to come along as well. And this is not a request this evening, but just a thank you for granting our request of funding for next year, for this year now, for Bacchus Community Center. We appreciate the allocation of $55,000, and I think there's a thank you letter in your packet to that effect. And this comes at a crucial moment for us. As you know, we're in the midst of the very beginning stages of bringing the Alexander Baker Building back to life, hopefully as a home for Kutaska, Head Start, and affordable housing on the second and the third floors. So continued support from the city is really critical. The other thing I think that this shows, and we have a sizable grant request pending with the Otto Bremer Trust, but being able to show city support, local support and commitment really helps access other funding from outside sources. And the Bremer Trust has been tremendous to Bacchus. We're close to $900,000, almost a million dollars in funding from them since 2007. And part of the request that we make to them, about a third of it goes to the countywide 4H programs in Cooch吳 County. So we act on behalf of both organizations that way. I'd also like to thank the mayor for, I guess personally pushing and promoting our request for funding this year. And as I was looking up some documents for our AB Housing Project, I came across the purchase agreement with the school district, and also a letter dated June 28th, 2002, to Mr. Alan Raspisson, who I believe would have been chair of the school board at the time.
Superintendent.
Superintendent at the time. And the letter is in reference to making a proposal to purchase the building. At the time, Citizens for Bacchus AB offers a dollar, earnest money, to that effect. They would eventually purchase both buildings for $850. But this is signed by the Executive Committee of Citizens for Bacchus, and the final signature on there is from Bob Anderson, ownership chair. And so Mayor Anderson, I just want to thank you for your longtime commitment to Bacchus AB and your continued commitment to it as well. And Bob, maybe a word about the funding or where we are with the building project, too?
Well, it's got, things are moving relatively fast, and Ward's done a tremendous amount of work, and the board's been working on this for many years, but now with, partnering with Kutaska, we're starting to see some synergies develop. There's been some preliminary studies done, some funding's coming in for that, and I think there's a real good support from the community and everybody we talked to about it. It's just, I think the timing's right, the project is right, both for the city as well as for Bacchus, but Alexander Baker is kind of that last piece of the puzzle. And once it does come together, it's going to be really a good synergy for all. It really speaks well for the city to have that as part of it. I think a lot of people from outside the community think that the community said, oh, that belongs to the city. No, it's a separate group, but we need the city and they need us. And when I moved back here three years ago, I wanted to get involved in an organization as a volunteer to do things, and I looked at them all, and to me, Bacchus was the one item that had one, you know, structure and had programs that offered the most to the most people. The only other entity in the area that I can think that comes close to that might be the school system. There isn't anything with so many people coming with so many different programs. So your continued support is, you know, very, very important, and I think you're going to hear some good things coming out with the Alexander Baker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions about the council?
I would like to thank you guys for a wonderful job over there. That building is beautiful. It's nice it was saved, and you have wonderful programs.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
And Kutaska's moving over to Bacchus?
Well, that's the tentative plan right now. They would like to do that, be more centrally located, and also bring the Head Start program with them. We had a core committee meeting, I think, last Friday from 10:00 AM till about 3:00 PM with Kutaska members and Bacchus members, and I guess we talked about that, you know, is this general knowledge or not, but I guess that's been the tentative plan that we've talked about all the way.
They also made it quite clear they have a lease for the city, which they will honor, 100-year lease.
But the thing about this for Bacchus is that we have a solid partner. We also have a tenant that'll bring capacity, they'll bring services to the first floor. This is the most unique and the best opportunity we've had since I've been involved to bring the AB building back to life. And we really have to do something with it soon, you know, it was started in 1912 and finished in 1914, and opened for students in. 1912 puts you back in the era of the Titanic sailing and sinking. William Howard Taft, president, World War William Howard Taft, President, World War I hadn't happened yet. So it's, you know, the building has been there a long time. We hope that it stands for some hundreds of years to come as well. I should mention, too, today's mail contained a $10,000 check from the Minnesota Historical Society, a grant award to help conduct the conditions assessment of the AV building by a historic architect and engineer. We hope to have proposals in back from architects by the end of the week. And we have at least one or two that are interested, hopefully, in doing that for us. So things are moving ahead. It's a long process, a lot of hoops to jump through, but we appreciate the city's support and I guess your thanks for what we do over there, too. So thank you.
And who knows, some of us might be living on the second or third floor over there.
Certainly, thank you, Ward. You know, you've done an outstanding job in leading that organization over there and making things happen. I never cease to be amazed at what goes on. I read your letter here. I think the only item I think that was missing was sports, because you do even allow the gymnasium floor to be used for basketball and basketball games under the Recreation Commission. I don't know that we can thank you enough for all that's been done over there. And I'm pleased to be a member of that organization and contribute each year.
Thank you. We look for all kinds of sources of revenue. We just started broadening our concessions available at basketball games. So if you stop over to that game tonight, you can purchase a $3 hot dog if you ever mind to. We only sold one last week, but we're hoping for a big increase in sales over there, too. So.
Thank you, and welcome home, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen. Item number four is also council information, and that's the public forum and presentation on the Coochin County Housing Study, which the city was a contributor. That will take place on Thursday, January the 17th, at the Bacchus Community Center. And we look forward to that report. And I think everyone has been given a copy of that report now, City Administrator?
They have, yes.
Thank you. Item number five is to consider the travel and training expenses for the fire rescue EMS staff to attend the Arrowhead EMS Conference and Expo in Duluth, January 23 through the 27th. I've asked this to be on the agenda. I know the City Administrator has received emails with regard to this. I've received requests from several members of the EMS staff. I know the City Administrator, and I'm not going to speak for you, Administrator Anderson, I know your concern for the growing cash deficit that the ambulance department has. I think we, as a city council, have, we've increased rates to the level that they'll be comparable to other area cities, and hopefully that will help to stem some of the cash deficit, growing cash deficit issue. Some way, somehow, I know we have to reduce our costs of operation to help bring that deficit down. The request by Chief Manasa was similar in the past to send seven members. I would not and could not justify sending seven persons, but I think this is a great training session that is held here in Duluth. In fact, I believe some of our EMTs are volunteers to the conference, and so they do not pay conference fees. And so I would recommend that we would send at least three or four individuals from the department for the conference. Ask the council's approval of that. What do we send for? Motion by Counsel Bowler that we would send four individuals from the fire rescue EMS staff to attend the Arrowhead EMS Conference and Expo in Duluth.
Second for sake of discussion.
Second by Counsel Kraus. Discussion. Administrator, do you want to speak first, or?
Mr. Mayor, I can. Just briefly, I think my concerns and comments are laid out very clearly in my memo to the council of today's date. As you pointed out, I'm not supportive of sending staff to a conference. Total expenses were just under $15,000, not including any mileage reimbursement that might have to be made when people went, and that included wage costs. I'm just concerned with the mounting deficit in the ambulance fund. And as I pointed out in my memo, as of January 3, it was $498,000. And so I think with this being a discretionary item and not mandatory, the significant ambulance fund deficit, and I just, and we've got some forthcoming expenses to purchase a new ambulance, which is about $170,000, and we haven't budgeted anything in 2018 or '29. Really will have to in 2020. I just think it's financially prudent to pare back our expenses, and this is one area where I saw that was possible. So I was recommending that the council not approve sending anybody to the conference.
Should.
Counsel Deech, please.
If you pro-rated that from the seven to four, would that average to roughly $2,000 per person? Or is there hidden expenses that you could?
That would be, that would probably be a good average. I think the hotel expenses for all seven people for the five days was over. It does average about $2,000 a person.
Further questions or discussion with regard with the motion? Chief Manasa, please.
We can shorten this by one day. I think we're too late to get on passes, so that would cut down one day. On Saturday are $125 per day per person.
And that would reduce the cost further?
Correct.
You have one less day for hotel and conference fees? Counsel Bowler.
I've got a question. I've got a little problem with figuring the wages into it. When any other person goes to a conference from Ted Brokaw or anybody, are the wages all figured into what that conference is actually costing them?
With the part-time EMTs, we don't compensate for the time that they're at training at the standard. This was included in my estimate.
Was the cost travel time along with meeting time?
No travel time.
No travel time?
No travel time. And then the costs or the wages comes over to the?
Counsel Kraus, please.
It was my understanding that you didn't have anybody that required training, or is that false? Is it required training, or is it additional training?
This is not required training. None of the conferences or anything we do is hours towards their required hours.
Sure.
Beneficial, very beneficial.
Getting CEUs, essentially, or?
Problem is EMS side does not use CEUs, so this sort of confusion comes in all the time. The travel expense form that we turn in does not use CEUs, so we follow the NC, National Core Curriculum.
But they're required so many hours in a year, and this would go towards those hours?
Correct. Period, there's a certain amount of hours that is one way to get those out.
Then would you be sending individuals that are short on hours, or how do you choose who gets to go?
Generally speaking, it's been on interest-based, and then factor is kind of who's done the work in the previous year. It's always, and that's how we've ran it in the past.
Is this information shared? Say, if we do send four people, is it shared among the others?
Correct.
And is it an organized share, or just say, I went and I learned this?
It's usually brought up at the next month's classes. If there was a very good class or a new program that's coming out, we'll give it to the department. That doesn't happen all the time. It depends on the classes attended.
Further discussion? Okay, the motion is to send four individuals from the fire rescue EMS staff to attend the Arrowhead EMS Conference, and that would be changing the date to January 24 through the 27th, so we eliminate one date there. No further discussion? Question?
No.
Aye. I would vote yes.
For the motion and one opposed, motion carries and approval is given for four attendees. Thank you. Move to item six under the new business, and that's to approve the Northeast Minnesota Regional Emergency Communications Board Bylaws and Joint Powers Agreement. Motion by Counsel Drowe.
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Kraus. Maybe Chief, if you could, for the new councilors, explain what the Northeast Minnesota Regional Emergency Communications Board does?
I will do my best. So this is part of the 800 megahertz radio system. There's the emergency communication, the ECB, the RAC, which is regional operators, and there's two other sides of that. So as a legislative body, the 800 megahertz radios that work statewide, these are the governing bodies that run that. So on the northeast side, it's the counties of Northeast Minnesota that vote on the usage of the radio system hours throughout the region. I did see they passed the bylaws along. I did not take note of the changes. I think it was very much bylaws. I don't think it was anything that was involved there. Right now, I believe I am an alternate on the board, and I don't, Counsel Drowe, are you?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Counsel Drowe is the elected official on the board, and?
I have not attended a meeting in the last few months, being in?
And Nathan Myers is the representative on the, is it on the rack or the, or on?
ECB.
The ECB? Okay, thank you. You're the alternate? Are you the alternate to him? I'm not sure.
I can't remember.
Okay.
Honestly, through these two organizations, they have about three breakouts here. Operator's, the, Counsel Drowe?
It's confusing, and I've been there.
Mr. Mayor, the General Advisory Committee, which is the rack committee that you've talked about, Chief Manasa is also talking about the Owners and Operators Committee, which is part of that. They have a Regional Radio System User Committee and the Special Advisory Committee. So there's lots of subgroups under the Emergency Communications Board. And as you pointed out, our elected representative is Counsel Drowe. Nathan Myers, who's a paramedic with the EMS service, he's the appointed member. And then Chief Manasa serves as an alternate in the, that, Nathan, you can make them.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you both for your explanations. So the motion again is to approve the bylaws and the joint powers agreement with the Northeast Minnesota Regional Communications Board. No further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye. I would vote yes.
Yes, motion is carried, and the bylaws and joint powers agreement are approved. Thank you. Item number seven is to approve the dental insurance renewal with the rate increases from the National Insurance Services, Emeritus Life Insurance Corporation, effective January the 1st, 2019. Motion by Counsel Drowe to approve the renewal rates and the increase. Second by Counsel Deech. None question?
Aye.
Aye. I would vote yes.
Motion is carried. The renewal and the rate increases are approved. Thank you. Item number eight is to approve the ImageTrend Elite Product Upgrade Software Licensing Agreement and authorized signatures. Fire Chief Manasa.
The ImageTrend program in question here is for the ambulance side. We currently use ImageTrend as our reporting software for the ambulance. Also switching to ImageTrend Elite, that is provided to us by the state for free, so that is at no cost. The ImageTrend product that we use right now on the ambulance side will be preparing in June of this year. So if we want to continue to use that, we need to make this upgrade on the ambulance side. Little bit confusing from the verbiage here, but this is to update the ambulance side of ImageTrend, the EMS side of ImageTrend Elite. So update or upgrade, but after that, the yearly subscription is the same as?
Administrator, please.
Chief, could you just talk a little bit about how this is used?
It'll be used the same as how we're currently using the ImageTrend product. So this is a reporting for patients when they go on an ambulance. After those patient care reports are uploaded into the system, then they get uploaded to the state system as well, which is a mandatory requirement of the ambulance service to a function called Minstar at a state level. So all ambulance runs are reviewed on that level, much like the fire side is what's called NIFRS reports. So those all get uploaded to the state and reviewed as well. So we need to have electronic documentation process. This is the company or the vendor we choose to use for electronic uploads. ImageTrend is popular in the state of Minnesota, reason being our Minnesota-based company out of Lakeville, Minnesota. The Fire Marshal's Office provides this for free on the fire side. They've signed a contract to provide the 780 fire departments in Minnesota with a free subscription on the fire side. It is also the recommended software on the EMS side, because that's get their runs uploaded. So it's the preferred software package that ambulance services use.
Questions for the chief? And if not, is there a motion then to approve the purchase or the upgrade of the software? Motion by Counsel Bowler.
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Kraus. Questions or discussion? Chief, would some of the private ambulance services may use this also, as well as government-based?
So any ambulance service, private or governmental owned in the state, does have to make those reports to the state. So I'm, Kraus uses ImageTrend for sure. I don't know about some of the other ones. I assume they do. Other nemesis system. My assumption is most ambulance services are using?
Thank you. Further questions or discussion? No question on the?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote yes. Motion is carried, and upgrade of software licensing agreement is approved. Thank you. Item number nine is the addition to the agenda, and that's to approve sending a letter of support for the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission's application for the U.S. EPA Brownfields Assessment Grant of $600,000. Your pleasure with that. Motion by Counsel Kraus.
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Bowler. No discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye. I would vote yes.
Motion is carried, and approval to send the letter is made. Thank you. Thank you. Item number 10 is a information piece, and that's the Freight Plan Open House that's going to be held by MinDOT District One in Duluth on January 16th. Any other new business to come before the council? We'll move to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. Police monthly report, Chief Mastin?
Mr. Mayor, council, I just see in your packet that included the December activity report for your police department for the month of December. We had a pretty quiet month in December this year, pretty much the same as last. We had a couple of community engagement events, one at Tim Horton's, and then we had our DARE graduation that Officer Ellsbury held at the high school, which I'd say was pretty well-attended and well-received. We had mandatory training last month in defensive tactics, an annual training that we have to go through. As far as our activity, we had 388 calls for service, conducted 121 traffic stops. We assisted with medical situations 26 times. We had 18 custodial arrests. We generated 93 cases. Then we issued 68. With my report, you'll see, for the new councils, you'll see everything is broken down to you, the attachments. So you can see every report that we've generated for the month and the type of report, whether it be burglary or domestic or whatnot, and then further back in there to break down all of the calls for service, you get a good idea of exactly what we do for those numbers. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Questions for Chief Mastin? How are the, how's the calendar parking? Is it...
Actually, we went through quite a wave with the parking and a lot of, a lot of comments and concern about that, but I think it's gotten a lot better. We're writing, we wrote a lot of calendar parking citations this year, but we are writing fewer. People are obeying the parking regulations much more than else. Successful.
Thank you. Please.
If I could just add to that, in the utility billings that we sent out most recently, we did our calendar parking requirements, and I think that we're trying to make a concerted effort to inform the public about what our calendar parking requirements are. It is really important, particularly this time of the year for snow removal operations, to try and observe the calendar parking requirements so that public works can clear the streets of snow. In that vein, we also included some information about requirements for snow removal and requirements for property owners and even tenants to remove snow from their sidewalks to facilitate access by meter readers, as well as the public that might need to get around town by, on foot versus driving. So we've tried to educate the public as much as possible, and I know that the Journal had an article recently too about our requirements. So we're trying to work in concert with just the enforcement, but also trying to educate the public about what our ordinance requirements are, and we want to try and help public safety
Thank you. And I would give credit to Chief Mastin for his recommendation to extend the hours from eight to 12, where you can have literally parking on both sides of the street during that period, but we extended them to six. And I think his recommendation was very good. Certainly thought about the folks who are working 12-hour shifts, coming home, parking their car, getting it on the right side for the next day, and I think that certainly has been helpful to a lot of citizens. So thank you for that recommendation.
I'd like to make one exception. I teach driver's ed. And our one-way street, our one and only one-way street here in town, often there's cars parked on both sides, and for a driver's ed car with young drivers to get through those cars, and that's one of our routes, getting used to one ways, it is very difficult. I guess I would like to see that calendar park, parking 24 hours a day, especially at, what is that, Eighth Street?
Ninth.
Ninth Street? 24 hours a day on that one.
So have to change their parking at midnight?
Pardon me?
So with, based off of that, everyone would have to change over at midnight?
Whatever it may be, just so that, whatever time doesn't make a difference, just so they're out of there and have a police officer go down there steady to move. I've had kids that just about side-sweep a car.
They should be only on one side during the daytime.
Should be, not always.
Evening hours, I could see where you might face that because we do have that period from 6:00 PM to midnight where they can park on either side.
Right, but that's not the case all the time. I hate to see it.
And hopefully those folks are getting ticketed.
Councillor Deech will make a concerted effort on Ninth Street on your behalf.
That means bar tickets, I think is what that...
Yeah, there you go.
Requested by Councillor Deech on the...
Yeah, there you go.
Bar ticket.
My compliments.
Late Christmas card from Councillor Deech.
Mayor?
Thank you, please.
Just a question, do you do driver's ed between the hours of 6:00 PM and midnight? Or is it just in the...
I do driver's ed after school, so that can be any time. Usually it's done by 10 o'clock. Of course, usually 8 o'clock, and usually one student in the afternoon, evening.
Okay, so, so that's where it could be problematic, and we wouldn't do any enforcement.
Well, Mr. Caserello does it almost any hours of the day, especially in the summertime.
Thank you. Further questions for Chief Mastin with regard to his report?
Good work.
Thank you. And thank you to Officer Ellsbury, who's very well-done, the DARE graduation.
Thank you, chief. Good job.
Item C under reports of boards, committees, and department heads, Chief Manasa, the fire rescue EMS monthly report, please.
In the month of December, we had five fire department call-outs. Four of those were within the city. And then we also had one rural fire call-out that was canceled en route. In the city, city calls, we had one residential, one commercial fire, and then two gas calls, gas leaks. Our monthly fire meeting was on the 20th of December with a regular meeting, a relief meeting, and radio communications training. Ambulance for the month of December, we did 68 911s and 53 transfers for a total of 121 runs, bringing the 2018 year-end totals to 906 911s, 574 transfers, for a total of 1,480 runs. And we also had our monthly meeting and training on the 12th of December, which included a business meeting, and then we did some skill stations as well. I also included just some very basic year-end statistics on the following pages. For 2018, fire department, we had a total of 67 department responses. Forty-four of those were city responses, 23 were in the rural, 12 CN train fills, and nine CO calls. And then again, just a recap on the ambulance for 2018, 1,480 total runs, 906 on 911s, and 574 on transfers. And then there is a graph on the back page that just shows what we call runs by disposition, so that's on the EMS side, and you can see how those runs stacked out as far as ALS, BLS, how many were refused and whatnot. So we will have a more detailed yearly report at the next council meeting, hopefully.
Questions for Chief Manasa, please. Busy, busy year.
Busy year?
Yes. Very well-done. Thank you. Last item under boards, committees, and department heads is building official, Kelly Myers, please.
I'm sure in the packet you have the report of the quarterly, report for the end of the quarter. Basically, what it is, is the report that I just handed out to you kind of shows the yearly of the list. The quarterly report that I put in your packets is basically probably the easiest one to look at to start with. It shows a comparison from 2016 to 2018, and basically it shows how, how the permits have came in throughout the year. The fee schedule gets a little interesting sometimes because we changed our fee schedule this year, and I believe it's going to be a plus for us. This is actually a good report to show it because it shows that in '16, we had good validation in the numbers, and we had a pretty good collection of fees. The next year, it was the same amount of permits, but the fees were down, and now we brought them back up, and it's going to be more uniform from now on. What we did is we did that flat fee this year, basically so that people that were doing, say, a roofing project on their home, they would be paying the same regardless of the validation of the project. It was a flat fee. It kind of helps out in a lot of ways because everybody's paying the same. Contractors aren't questioning why my permit is more than the other contractor. Now they can just say, this is what it is each time they do it. So they actually like it. It's, and I think it gives us a better project number at the end. Instead of them telling me the project's going to be a $2,000 project when it might have been a $5,000 project, now they'll tell me it's truly a $5,000 project because it didn't change the fee schedule. The fee is the same regardless. So they're pretty open about telling us true, true numbers of what it is. The one thing on the chart that I gave you on the fourth quarters, you'll see zoning at the top of that one. The reason that one is so small this year is because when Don Kosick, our former IT person, was here, he just inputted this for me at his last few days here. So we're actually got information from about middle of October till now, so that's why it's so small. Next year, it'll show us a better number of where we're looking at certain zoning relations to the projects. So that should help us there. The second page of things, it's kind of the quarterly report, which shows what we collected through the year. It started, our program that we use started in 2014. It's a little confusing to look at, so that is why I did this annual report number for you, the activity from 2016 to '18, the paper I just gave you. Basically, in 2016, we had 236 permits, and we collected about $54,000. In '17, we had 232 permits, but we only collected $23,000. The reason that would be is because of validations of the projects weren't quite as high as in '16. This year, we changed the format, and we actually upped our fees, so we're averaged the same as other communities, so we're at the, at the level we should be, and that's why our fees are up in this year. Permit numbers didn't change, but the collection did on our end. To give you a rough idea, the building permits are basically, it's supposed to be a collection fee. You're supposed to be able to offset your budget from what we collect to what goes into the building budget throughout the year, and this has gotten us a lot closer to where we should be than where we were. Way off on that one a little bit. We did do some demolitions this year. Last year, we had 11 structures we took down. This year, we only took down nine, but we do have five pending with orders that we have approved at council that are waiting for judgments on, so hopefully we'll be getting those down early this spring.
Question, maybe this isn't the place and the time to ask this question, but being new, I have questions. What is the criteria for the city to knock down a building? I know we came up with the local motel a few months back, but what is the criteria? Is there a criteria or anything where they say, yes, we're going to, no, we're not?
For the residential, they basically, the way it's set up is they have to clean up the interior, anything that would be normal garbage to go to with a, the garbage demolition that you would put in your garbage can at home has to be removed from the structure prior to us taking it down. Do a residential structure where there is no cost to the person, and there's, there's no fees in, in... Basically, it was set up originally so that we were tearing down a garage or home, and we were going to build a new one on the same site. I think that happens quite a bit with the garages in the residential area. As far as the demolition program goes with the commercials, there's a hardship case where they have to ask two initial contractors of, of interest. If they show no interest, the city can tear it down, but you're supposed to pay per load for what you bring to the dump or to... Kind of the, kind of the catch of it a little bit. It's, it's something we do need to look into. It's a program that's been around for quite some time. It's been in place since, I think when I looked, Mr. Deech, it was 2002, I believe, was the last time it was actually updated, so it's...
What would you estimate the cost of knocking down a residential home and disposing of it?
That, I would not be able to answer that one. Public Works Department, so I mean, you're talking the trucks and the removal, I wouldn't be able to give you a fair number, I guess.
Does the city recoup any of this in any way? Nothing?
There's no recoup way it's set up right now. We have our own demolition landfill, just, I don't know, a lot of people don't know that. So the stuff we tear down goes to our demolition landfill, so we have to cap it after it's done every year. We do get guys, I think there's three people licensed to, to actually keep a look of it. We cannot haul any burnt-out debris to our site. We're not licensed for that. So any burnt-out building, that has to go to the county demolition.
Other questions for Kelly? Councillor Drogba, please.
Kelly, I know that we did go to that flat fee, and you said that that got us way closer to where we need to be. If I remember correctly, we're still, not considerably lower, but we're on average lower than most communities of our size, correct?
Actually, no. I think we're pretty close now.
Okay.
Yeah, we got pretty close on it. Where we were really low before was in our plan review fees. We were, I forget the number now too, I think it was 30% of the cost of the permit, and it was like for a commercial, 15% for residential, and the state average was 65% and 30%. So we were, that's where you see on this chart where I show $12,000 for '18 and $6,000 in '17. Basically, those are big numbers because we had the airport terminal that year in '16, and then we had the second phase in, in '18. We also had quite a few other projects during that time.
So we're a lot closer to where we need to be?
We are really, we're probably right where we need to be right now, to give you an answer for that. I think sometimes we, we are looking now, we're, we're getting more fees in place that we weren't even collecting for before. Some of the things like a sign-type thing, that is actually a requirement, which isn't a building permit, but it's a zoning permit. So that's where those numbers will come in, there to change.
Other questions for building inspector zoning officer? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Great year, well done. Go to the city administrator for your report, please.
Mayor, a few things just briefly. I did want to report to the city council that the city received in December a dividend from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, which is the, where we get our property and capital, the insurance from, and received a check for 2018 in the amount of $9,866. So, and, and there is a dividend that's distributed to all participating communities, and most due in the state of Minnesota, and our share of $9,866 out of a total of about 2.7 million statewide. So that'll be deposited in, or has been deposited into our general fund. I did just want to mention that, and I want to confirm with the new council members that I was out this week, and we talked about touring city facilities Friday, the 11th, at about 9 o'clock, so we're still okay with meeting here. Look at the facilities and have a... It'll be this Friday. And I did want to request that the city council consider having and scheduling a budget and finance committee meeting to address the contract that we had in 2019 with the In addition to that, I think we should have a committee of the whole meeting, perhaps could be a budget and finance committee meeting to assess the status of the 1982 fire truck, the ladder truck that we have... the status of the 1982 fire truck, the ladder truck that we had declined to accept our offer to purchase that for $99. So, should have a conversation about how we want to dispose of that or how we want to handle that. And then I, I think it'll take some discussion, have a presentation discussion about the recommendations that the consultant, Mike Metroy, prepared for the ambulance and fire department. So, we need to in a committee session to discuss those issues. So, I'd like
Further? Questions for the City Administrator?
I can call a Budget and Finance meeting. In fact, I had talked to the mayor about doing that anyways, but now with new members on the council, I don't know when it works best for you guys. I'm available most days after noon, whenever works for you guys. Yep.
So, I can pretty much make it work.
You know, I can be flexible if I know ahead of time.
Okay. Do we want to even, all we could, it would be tough to get this week. Do we want to go next week on Tuesday, the 15th? 1:00?
Looking at my calendar, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm, I may, it may be later than that for me.
Okay, what time works for you?
Probably sometime later in the afternoon.
I would help you any, I'm thinking like a 3:00?
3:00 works for me.
Me, I have required
Yes.
Pass down to the Twin Cities at
Thank you.
I wouldn't be back around
Even better, we can get some stuff done. So, you talk a lot. Okay, can move to the 16th? Wednesday, the 16th?
Are you back on the 16th?
Yes, I'm back. I have a mandatory meeting at 3:00 on Wednesdays that, I mean, if you wanted to do, if we could do 1:00 with the understanding that I'm on call, so if something happens, I'll have to leave, but we'll still have a quorum, obviously, so.
1:00 on the 16th?
Yep.
Budget and Finance.
And because, you know, we want to get to know each other, we should have another one like the following week because we're not going to get all of our business done on the 16th. So, we should have another one like the following week.
And report to 16th too? Or is that 17th?
Housing is on this 17th at 6:00, 17th at 6:00.
I think, I think if we have all of the stuff that the City Administrator talked about that we have to talk about, I think at some point we should start, so we don't get into the problem that we have last year, set priorities for this year's, this year's budget of what we want to do in 2020 and then kind of even just have, even if it's a committee of the whole, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Budget and Finance meeting, but I think if we had a committee of the whole meeting, and the mayor could call that, we should have a discussion of what all of our goals are going into this year. And one of the things that the city hasn't had in a little while is a strategic action plan and I think if we were to really sit down and find out what the goals of this body is for the next year and the next two years, because two of us have two more years on the council for sure and you guys have four, kind of outline what we'd like to see done in the next two and four years.
Thursday would be better for you? Because you have 3:00 on a Wednesday?
I have 3:00 on Wednesdays, that's me.
How are Thursdays? I do one on like the 24th?
I can do 24th.
Should we try 1/30 or?
1/30 works for me. And that's just a committee of the whole?
Yes.
Okay.
1/30? The City Administrator, I have a agenda for that?
Who's the date on that, Early?
The 24th.
Again, with the fact that I can try and get coverage, but if something major happens, obviously.
Good, thank you. So, we've kind of moved into the item two under the Reports of Boards, Committees and Department Heads, Mayor, Council Committees, Boards and Commissions. Anything to come forth there? You have the mayor's written report for the past several weeks. I do want to mention the fire truck, the used fire truck is here and I had an opportunity to tour that with the fire chief. If you haven't, may want to, I don't know if you intend to do that on Friday.
I put it on, at the end of the day-to-day, we can go if you want us to stop over there tonight to look at it, I think
Oh, yeah, okay. Anyone wants to go over and take a look at the new fire truck?
It's me.
All right. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to bring something to attention to the council? Okay.
I want to say, I'm really excited for all of you. I think you're on the brink of some great changes in the city and new leadership is always exciting, so. But anyway, the reason I'm here today is because there are two passions for me when I was on the council. One of them was transparency in government and community engagement, which was part of KCC-TV, the mission there. And the second thing was the housing. When I had the opportunity to go door-knocking, door-to-door and see some of the conditions that our children especially live in, it's hard to say that if you do one thing on the council, you must do something for housing. And so, we did under, it started under the EDA, our EDA, but it moved to the city. Now, we have an ad hoc, commercial and residential building advisory committee that I think you wanted to add light to. There are a number of people in the community who would like to serve on that committee. I'm one of them. And so, tonight, when you were making the recommendations for the appointments, that particular committee was not mentioned and so I'm concerned, you know, I'm bird-dogging this because it is a passion and all. And I guess we will need a city counselor to serve on that committee. But we are on the brink, I think, of doing something because of the energy, a lot of it from Bacchus and Underwards' passion, the housing study and that with that committee, we, you know, we can maybe engage in some housing projects or something that will help with the housing. So, my, the only reason I'm here right now is to say, make sure that I get on there, I want to be on there and then secondly, that we'll need some appointments. Gary Coran has expressed an interest and I have some other people that I'll forward to you.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And ad hoc committees can be appointed at any time.
Okay.
And so, yes, I would like an update on who wants to continue to serve and then who would be new.
Okay. And on that computer, there's a housing folder with all kinds of stuff and in that top drawer.
Don't worry, I won't find it.
Well, I want, I don't want it to be lost. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for your passion on housing. It is one of the cornerstones of our community and need to treat it as that. Thank you for attending the housing study meetings that we've had over the past six, eight months and
And I'll be here on
This is 17th?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, further from the audience?
Mr. Deitch, so quick, I just wanted to say, thank you for scheduling the meeting. We look forward to the outstanding contract between the Chamber and the city of what we do and I don't know if it's got it here. We obviously moved to have Icebox Days on good faith.
Able to be at that meeting?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. One else in the audience, we'll move to, excuse me, Counselor Crowes.
When is Icebox Days? Having a meeting and then moving on our recommendations of said meeting after Icebox Days. I'm just throwing that out there. Because the committee of the whole meeting, we cannot make any decisions that are binding. That has to be made at this meeting and that next one is January 21st. I'm just
22nd?
22nd, sorry, just throwing that out there.
Thank you for that quick clarification that our attendance at previous Budget and Finance Committee, we were not at the last one where the decisions were made on the contract to the city, but it was right, it's holidays, it was end of December when it was all going down. We had initially, in our response request, asked to ask to have this wrapped up and some type of funding for Icebox Days prior to that, but again, with the assumption of
The, you're certainly going to continue forward with the Icebox Days celebration. The city will be participating. I know getting the race route prepared and everything for Saturday and amongst other things that you need help with, the fireworks, there's most of activities that the city will be participating in. Thank you. Then reminders that the city offices will be closed on January 21st, Martin Luther King Day and then the regular city council meeting will be Tuesday, January 22nd at 4:30. Further to come before the city council this evening. Thank you for your patience and have a good evening. We're adjourned.